Thank you very much Chairman Crawford, ladies and gentlemen, and our good witnesses in the two panels that we will be hearing from shortly. We appreciate you being here and having the opportunity to hear from the witnesses not only of both panels on what we can do to ensure that farmers, ranchers, and dairy producers across this great nation of ours have the necessary financial resources to continue to produce what I believe, I think what this entire Subcommittee believes, is the most nutritious, the finest food products grown anywhere in the world at cost levels to American consumers that cannot be matched anywhere in the world. And certainly it's the agricultural producers of this nation that make it happen every day. But we're here because the certainty provided by availability of credit for our producers is critical, link in the continued prosperity of our ability to make this happen. Despite the strength of the farm economy, we all know that there is significant volatility that occurs on a cyclical nature throughout every region of America. America's farmers, ranchers, and dairy producers face so many different variables as they grow the food that we put on our dinner table each night and every day that sadly, in my view, it's too often taken for granted by the consumers who get that wonderful food at their table. They don't understand in many instances the hard work and the risk-taking that's involved. These variables every day take different shapes and forms. I mean, obviously, we're all aware of the natural disasters like droughts and floods. And despite those challenges, our producers are resilient, but they also deal with other levels of volatility of the marketplace. And obviously, we are proud of their efforts to preserve and sustain themselves through these difficult challenges. In my home state of California, across much of the western United States, farmers, ranchers, and dairy producers, as the Chairman noted a moment ago, are dealing with a devastating drought after three consecutive below-average rainfall years. And you coupled with that with water systems that today cannot meet the demands of the needs that we face. And in California, for example, we're looking at a six million acres of very highly productive agriculture in which possibly over 600,000 acres of the six million could become fallow this year. So we're still totaling up those impacts and costs. So therefore, we have to ensure that credit is available to our producers, both large and small and in-between. And to ensure that credit's available, that we have the mechanisms in place, the tools to provide them that financial assistance. For example, the dairy producers in California and across the country saw a sharp decline in prices back in 2009 and 2010 when we were looking at $9 per hundred weight in milk prices. We had significant bankruptcies as a result of that. Farm credit was impacted with their loan portfolio, as was other private institutions that had a great deal of financing with dairies. But with the passage of the new farm bill, and I think bipartisan credit is due to this Subcommittee and to the full committee with both Chairman Lucas and Ranking Member Peterson, we were able to produce a 2014 farm bill that I think reflects a lot of the current needs that American agriculture is facing. Dairy producers, as an example, and lenders alike will have confidence to apply for and provide loans respectively because of the new dairy title and the safety net that exists with the insurance program as an example. There were also other reforms that were made in the Agricultural Act of 2014 that we believe collectively bolster rural America. The microloans that were mentioned, the efforts to provide assistance to young farmers, and all of these combined efforts with the equipped program and market access program. Again, we take for granted, but American agricultural exports at our all-time high. And so not only can we produce the food on the American consumer's dinner table, nowhere better than we do it here, but we can compete on foreign markets if we have a level playing field. So, Mr. Chairman, I look forward to hearing what our witnesses have to say about their confidence in our agriculture economy and the attempt to ensure that we have a stable source of lending activity that is available for agriculture in every region in America as we implement the reforms in the 2014 farm bill. So thank you, and I yield back the balance of my time.
I thank Ranking Member and would request that any members that want to submit opening statement would do so in writing, so we can submit that for the record. Witnesses may begin their testimony and ensure that there's ample time for questions. I would like to welcome our first panel witnesses, our first three witnesses, the Honorable Jill Long Thompson, Chairman and CEO, Farm Credit Administration; Mr. Chris Bayerhelm, Department Administrator for Farm Loan Programs, Farm Service Agency, USDA; and Mr. Nathan S. Kaufman, Assistant Vice President, Federal Reserve Bank of Kansas City, Omaha Branch, Omaha, Nebraska. Appreciate the witnesses being here today. We will recognize each of you in turn for five minutes. I would point, direct your attention to the timer and the box that you see in front of you. If the light's green, it means you're good to go. If it turns yellow, it's just like when you're in your car, you might want to step on the gas because it's fixing to turn red. So we appreciate that. And with that, I would like to introduce our first witness, the Honorable Jill Long Thompson. You're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Subcommittee, I am Jill Long Thompson, Board Chair and Chief Executive Officer of the Farm Credit Administration. On behalf of my colleagues on the FCA board, Kenneth Spearman and Leland Strom, and the dedicated women and men at FCA, I am pleased to participate in this hearing today. As required by the Farm Credit Act of 1971 is amended, FCA serves as the independent arms-length agency responsible for examining and regulating the banks, associations, and related entities of the farm credit system. We take our responsibilities very seriously, and we strive to interpret the Farm Credit Act faithfully. Congress established the farm credit system in 1916 to provide American agriculture with a dependable source of credit. The system consists of a nationwide network of cooperatively organized banks and associations that are owned and controlled by their borrowers. It serves all 50 states and the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico. At year-end 2012, the system held more than 46% of the nation's farm real estate debt. And I'm pleased to report that the system's overall condition and performance remains sound, and it continues to fulfill its congressional mission. The system's net income was $4.64 billion in 2013, up 12.7% from 2012. Since 2010, when the financial crisis and recession were in full swing, credit quality has continued to improve. As of December 31, 2013, non-performing loans amounted to $2 billion or 1.01% of gross loans, down from $2.6 billion or 1.36% at year-end 2012. Because the system raises the money it lends to borrowers by selling securities in the debt markets, having reliable access to debt capital is critical for the system. And I'm happy to report that it continues to experience reliable access, and investor demand for all system debt security products is strong. In addition to monitoring the farm credit system, my agency closely monitors the farm economy for emerging risks that would affect farmers and their lenders. Currently, U.S. agriculture as a whole remains strong. In the Farm Credit Act, Congress requires system institutions to provide programs specifically to serve young, beginning, and small, or as we call them, YBS, farmers and ranchers. In our examinations of system institutions, we review their YBS programs to ensure that they are meeting the needs of these borrowers. And we also require annual reports from institutions on their YBS lending activities. In the wake of the global financial crisis, we have undertaken two major rule-making actions to strengthen the safety and soundness of system institutions. Last June, we issued a revised liquidity regulation requiring each bank to maintain higher-quality liquidity as well as a supplemental liquidity buffer. The rule helps ensure that system banks keep liquidity to continue operating if their access to the capital markets is temporarily interrupted. In addition, FCA staff worked throughout 2013 and into 2014 on extensive revisions to the agency's capital regulations. The proposed rule, which the Board adopted last month, would modernize our capital requirements while ensuring that system institutions continue to hold regulatory capital to fulfill their mission. Another part of our mission is to regulate and oversee the Federal Agricultural Mortgage Corporation, or as it's known, Farmer Mac. Congress established Farmer Mac in 1988 to provide a secondary market for agricultural mortgage and
...here from the witnesses, not only of both panels, on what we can do to ensure that farmers, ranchers, and dairy producers across this great nation of ours have the necessary financial resources to continue to produce what I believe, I think what this entire subcommittee believes, is the most nutritious, the finest food products grown anywhere in the world. At cost levels to American consumers that cannot be matched anywhere in the world. And certainly, it's the agricultural producers of this nation that make it happen every day. But we're here because the certainty provided by availability of credit for our producers is critical, link in the continued prosperity of our ability to make this happen. Despite the strength of the farm economy, we all know that there is significant volatility that occurs on a cyclical nature throughout every region of America. America's farmers, ranchers, and dairy producers face so many different variables as they grow the food that we put on our dinner table each night and every day, that sadly, in my view, it's too often taken for granted by the consumers who get that wonderful food at their table. They don't understand, in many instances, the hard work and the risk-taking that's involved. These variables, every day, take different shapes and forms. I mean, obviously, we're all aware of the natural disasters like droughts and floods. And despite those challenges, our producers are resilient. But they also deal with other levels of volatility of the marketplace. And obviously, we are proud of their efforts to preserve and sustain themselves through these difficult challenges. In my home state of California, across much of the western United States, farmers, ranchers, and dairy producers, as the chairman noted a moment ago, are dealing with a devastating drought after three consecutive below-average rainfall years. And you coupled with that with water systems that today cannot meet the demands of the needs that we face. And in California, for example, we're looking at a six million acres of very highly productive agriculture in which possibly over 600,000 acres of the six million could become fallow this year. So we're still totaling up those impacts and costs. So therefore, we have to ensure that credit is available to our producers, both large and small and in-between. And to ensure that credit's available, that we have the mechanisms in place, the tools, to provide them that financial assistance. For example, the dairy producers in California and across the country saw a sharp decline in prices back in 2009 and 2010, when we were looking at $9 per hundred weight in milk prices. We had significant bankruptcies as a result of that. Farm credit was impacted with their loan portfolio, as was other private institutions that had a great deal of financing with dairies. But with the passage of the new Farm Bill, and I think bipartisan credit is due to this subcommittee and to the full committee with both Chairman Lucas and Ranking Member Peterson, we were able to produce a 2014 Farm Bill that I think reflects a lot of the current needs that American agriculture is facing. Dairy producers, as an example, and lenders alike will have confidence to apply for and provide loans, respectively, because of the new dairy title and the safety net that exists with the insurance program, as an example. There were also other reforms that were made in the Agricultural Act of 2014 that we believe collectively bolster rural America. The microloans that were mentioned, the efforts to provide assistance to young farmers. And all of these combined efforts with the Equip Program and Market Access Program, again, we take for granted, but American agricultural exports at our all-time high. And so not only can we produce the food on the American consumer's dinner table, nowhere better than we do it here, but we can compete on foreign markets if we have a level playing field. So, Mr. Chairman, I look forward to hearing what our witnesses have to say about their confidence in our agriculture economy and the attempt to ensure that we have a stable source of lending activity that is available for agriculture in every region in America as we implement the reforms in the 2014 Farm Bill. So, thank you, and I yield back the balance of my time.
I thank Ranking Member, and would request that any members that want to submit opening statement would do so in writing, so we can submit that for the record. Witnesses may begin their testimony and ensure that there's ample time for questions. I would like to welcome our first panel witnesses, our first three witnesses, the Honorable Jill Long Thompson, Chairman and CEO, Farm Credit Administration; Mr. Chris Bayerhelm, Department Administrator for Farm Loan Programs, Farm Service Agency, USDA; and Mr. Nathan S. Kaufman, Assistant Vice President of Federal Reserve Bank of Kansas City, Omaha Branch, Omaha, Nebraska. Appreciate the witnesses being here today. We will recognize each of you in turn for five minutes. I would point, direct your attention to the timer and the box that you see in front of you. If the light's green, it means you're good to go. If it turns yellow, it's just like when you're in your car, you might want to step on the gas because it's fixing to turn red. So, we appreciate that. And with that, I would like to introduce our first witness, the Honorable Jill Long Thompson. You're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Subcommittee, I am Jill Long Thompson, Board Chair and Chief Executive Officer of the Farm Credit Administration. On behalf of my colleagues on the FCA Board, Kenneth Spearman and Leland Strom, and the dedicated women and men at FCA, I am pleased to participate in this hearing today. As required by the Farm Credit Act of 1971 as amended, FCA serves as the independent arms-length agency responsible for examining and regulating the banks, associations, and related entities of the farm credit system. We take our responsibilities very seriously, and we strive to interpret the Farm Credit Act faithfully. Congress established the farm credit system in 1916 to provide American agriculture with a dependable source of credit. The system consists of a nationwide network of cooperatively organized banks and associations that are owned and controlled by their borrowers. It serves all 50 states and the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico. At year-end 2012, the system held more than 46% of the nation's farm real estate debt. And I'm pleased to report that the system's overall condition and performance remain sound, and it continues to fulfill its congressional mission. The system's net income was $4.64 billion in 2013, up 12.7% from 2012. Since 2010, when the financial crisis and recession were in full swing, credit quality has continued to improve. As of December 31, 2013, non-performing loans amounted to $2 billion, or 1.01% of gross loans, down from $2.6 billion, or 1.36% at year-end 2012. Because the system raises the money it lends to borrowers by selling securities in the debt markets, having reliable access to debt capital is critical for the system, and I'm happy to report that it continues to experience reliable access. And investor demand for all system debt security products is strong. In addition to monitoring the farm credit system, my agency closely monitors the farm economy for emerging risks that would affect farmers and their lenders. Currently, U.S. agriculture as a whole remains strong. In the Farm Credit Act, Congress requires system institutions to provide programs specifically to serve young, beginning, and small, or as we call them, YBS, farmers and ranchers. In our examinations of system institutions, we review their YBS programs to ensure that they are meeting the needs of these borrowers, and we also require annual reports from institutions on their YBS lending activities. In the wake of the global financial crisis, we have undertaken two major rule-making actions to strengthen the safety and soundness of system institutions. Last June, we issued a revised liquidity regulation requiring each bank to maintain higher-quality liquidity as well as a supplemental liquidity buffer. The rule helps ensure that system banks keep liquidity to continue operating if their access to the capital markets is temporarily interrupted. In addition, FCA staff worked throughout 2013 and into 2014 on extensive revisions to the agency's capital regulations. The proposed rule, which the board adopted last month, would modernize our capital requirements while ensuring that system institutions continue to hold regulatory capital to fulfill their mission. Another part of our mission is to regulate and oversee the Federal Agricultural Mortgage Corporation, or as it's known, Farmer Mac. Congress established Farmer Mac in 1988 to provide a secondary market for agricultural mortgage and rural home loans to improve the availability of cost-effective long-term credit and liquidity to America's farmers, ranchers, and rural communities. Farmer Mac is in good financial condition and continues to grow its operations and risk-bearing capacity to advance its statutory mission. In the past couple of years, as our nation has considered the ways corporate misconduct may have contributed to the recent financial crisis, my agency has increased its emphasis on ethics and standards of conduct, both among our own employees and in the institutions we regulate. American agriculture is critical to meeting the food demands of this nation and this world, and the farm credit system is a critical source of financing for America's farmers and ranchers. As the regulator of the system, FCA is committed to helping maintain this source for generations to come. And, Mr. Chairman, this concludes my statement, but of course, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And we will move on to our next witness, Mr. Chris Bayerhelm, Deputy Administrator, Farm Loan Programs, FSA.
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, thank you for this opportunity to appear before you to provide an update on credit conditions in rural America and a status update on how FSA loan programs are working with our commercial lending partners to provide credit to our farmers and ranchers. The farm economy has been strong in recent years with high farm income and farmland values at or near record levels. However, these highs are not expected to continue, and not all in agriculture sector have benefited from these conditions. An increase in feed grain production is expected to drive farm income down, and a slowdown in real estate values has already been observed. Our livestock producers and dairy operations are still recovering from extended periods of high feed costs and drought, and input costs for all are expected to remain at near or high-record levels of recent years. Finally, considering all of these events combined with interest rates creeping up, lenders and their regulators are closely scrutinizing agriculture credits, making some producers unable to get credit. For those family farmers who cannot qualify for commercial credit due to lender standards but are otherwise creditworthy, they can turn to the FSA Direct and Guaranteed Loan Programs. These loan programs are discretionary and are funded through annual appropriations. Federal budget resources have been increasingly leveraged over the last four years to loan programs. For example, in 2010, $148 billion of budget authority was needed to provide $5 billion of lending authority, while in 2014, a significantly reduced budget authority of $98 million is provided for $5.5 billion of lending authority. This is an excellent example of how government programs that are run well and performing provide the taxpayer with a greater return. Since early 2009, FSA has experienced record demand levels of loan requests. In each of the last four years, FSA has had a significant backlog of approved but unfunded loans. To manage this increase, the President's 2015 budget has requested lending authority to go to $6.4 billion. And should these funds be provided, FSA expects for the first time in many, many years to be able to meet all of the demand in our loan programs. This will allow our customers to better prepare and execute their business plans and compete on an even playing field for land and preseason discounts. As of May 2014, the FSA portfolio was $20 billion, 71,000 direct customers, 34,000 guaranteed customers. Performance of the portfolio has been stellar, with loss rates for the Direct and Guaranteed Programs at 1.6% and 0.3%, respectively. Delinquencies for Direct and Guarantees are 5.4% and 1%, respectively. The portfolio continues to be fluent, with customers moving in and out of the portfolio as it was designed. In fact, of all of the customers in our portfolio in the year 2000 for the operating program, only 14% of those remained in 2013. These statistics indicate that programs providing new and beginning farmers an opportunity, but once their financial condition improves, they're able to seek and obtain commercial credit. FSA continues to put emphasis on beginning farmers, continued increase in the average age of farmers, and rural population decline says it is a must that we get new farmers into the industry. We've tried to take existing loan programs and tweak and revise those to provide benefits to beginning farmers. Most notably, the microloan program you mentioned earlier has been a tremendous asset to beginning farmers. Since its inception in January of 2013, over 7,200 of these loans have been made, and I'm pleased to tell you that over 70% of those have been to beginning farmers. Congress also recognized the importance of beginning farmers in the last Farm Bill. And soon after enactment, FSA implemented all of the discretionary, or the non-discretionary provisions of the Farm Bill, and many of those had immediate impact on beginning farmers. The remaining of the Farm Bill provisions will be implemented in October 2014, with the rest in early 2015. In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, FSA working together with our commercial lending partners delivering a successful lending program with high levels of participation and fiscal responsibility. Our boots-on-the-ground delivery system puts us in a unique position to deliver a quality loan product to the next generations of America's farmers and ranchers. However, we continue to face challenges. Government resources are declining, and agriculture is changing. We look forward to working with this committee and others to continue to refine and adjust our programs and processes to maximize the opportunities for our small, beginning, and socially disadvantaged farmers and find the appropriate level of resources in order for us to meet this, accomplish this mission. Thank you for allowing me to share the FSA farm loan perspectives as you seek to address this important issue. I look forward to any questions now or in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now pleased to recognize the Vice President of Federal Reserve Bank of Kansas City, Mr. Nathan Kaufman. You are recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Subcommittee. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. My name is Nathan Kaufman, and I am Assistant Vice President and Economist at the Federal Reserve Bank of Kansas City, a regional reserve bank that has long devoted significant attention to U.S. agriculture. In my role, I lead several efforts to track the agricultural and rural economy, including a Regional Agricultural Credit Survey and the Federal Reserve Systems Agricultural Finance Data Book, which is a national survey of agricultural lending activity at commercial banks. I'm pleased to share with you this morning information on the current state of agricultural credit markets. Before I begin, let me emphasize that my statement represents my view only and is not necessarily that of the Federal Reserve System or any of its representatives. The U.S. agricultural economy has been very strong since 2009. According to the USDA, average farm income from 2010 through 2013 annually was about 46% higher than the average of the previous 10 years. Crop prices surged, and cropland values increased dramatically during that time. In key crop-producing states, cropland values rose by more than 20% annually for several consecutive years, which strengthened overall farm sector balance sheets. The crop sector was a primary driver of these near-record farm incomes, while the livestock sector experienced multiple years of poor profits or losses due to elevated feed costs. Several key measures of agricultural credit conditions monitored by the Kansas City Fed also improved from 2009 to 2013. According to Federal Reserve surveys of agricultural banks, repayment rates for agricultural production loans in the Kansas City, Chicago, and Minneapolis districts all improved considerably alongside rising farm income. Profitability at agricultural banks also strengthened significantly. During this time, however, bankers commented that agricultural loan demand had fallen despite declining interest rates, as farmers used more cash to pay for farm-related expenses. Although the overall financial position of the farm sector had improved, some agricultural producers were more at risk for financial stress than others. Our banker contacts consistently voiced concerns about the viability of some livestock operations facing steep losses, as well as young and beginning farmers with significantly less equity in their operations. Since last fall's crop harvest, sharp changes in agricultural commodity prices have led to corresponding changes in the outlook for the farm sector and agricultural finance. Current corn prices are about 40% less than last year. Conversely, average fed cattle prices are approximately 25% higher than a year ago. And overall livestock prices and lower feed costs have contributed to a rebound in livestock sector profitability. Lower crop prices and persistently high input costs have reduced profit margins for U.S. crop producers and have affected recent trends in agricultural lending. Toward the end of 2013, declining profit margins reduced farm cash flow. As a result, demand for some agricultural loans began to rise, and lending activity jumped considerably in the first quarter of 2014. The Federal Reserve's Agricultural Finance Data Book included with my written testimony shows that the volume of new short-term farm loan originations increased by 28% from the previous year in the first quarter. Total farm debt at commercial banks increased by 9.1% from a year earlier, and non-real estate farm debt rose by 9.9%, which was the biggest year-over-year increase since 2001. Delinquency rates on agricultural loans, however, have remained historically low, and bankers have continued to report that ample funds are available for agricultural borrowers amid a relatively competitive environment for high-quality agricultural loans. Looking ahead, the level of working capital and overall liquidity in the farm sector will be crucial components of the financial health and credit conditions surrounding U.S. farm operations. If profit margins remain under pressure in the crop sector and debt continues to rise, the ability of crop producers to withstand an increase in financial stress may be a concern, even as the outlook for the livestock sector has improved. Farmers with lower levels of equity, including young and beginning farmers, may be most vulnerable to financial stress, particularly if cropland values fall and farm income declines from its historically high levels. Despite these concerns, commercial banks have continued to recognize the long-term potential for U.S. agriculture and have financed the sector accordingly, albeit more cautiously in some areas. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for inviting me today. This concludes my remarks. I would be happy to answer any questions there may be.
Thank you, and I want to thank all the panelists for being so accurate on your time. It was wonderful. Doesn't happen all the time. Again, thank you, and thank the witnesses. Chair, I would remind the members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who are present at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of their arrival. Appreciate your understanding. I'll recognize myself to begin the questioning. Recognize myself for five minutes. I want to start with Ms. Long Thompson. You testified that non-performing loans totaled $2.1 billion, which is a decrease of nearly $600 million. Is the non-performing loan portfolio, is that a geographic prerogative? Is it dominated by any certain sector of the ag industry, or is there a region in the country that may contribute more so than others?
Certainly, in, among those institutions that we regulate, that if they happen to be located in a part of the country where there's been stress, you might see some additional, a higher level of non-performing loans. But we haven't detected a specific pattern geographically. I would, however, be very happy to provide you, we have very good data, we do analyses of the overall farm economy as well as of the health of the system regularly, and we have some very good data that I would be happy to share with you and your staff. The non-performing loans tend to occur in those areas of agriculture that are under stress. And if there happens to be a small association that has a high percentage of loans in that area, you might find that within one association or another association. But generally speaking, across the board, the system is safe and sound.
Okay, excellent. You also mentioned the Farm Credit Insurance Fund. Do any other GSEs have any similar type of insurance fund or reserves that you're aware of?
Well, you know, someone else would probably, could probably better answer that question, but I think you know very well the history of the Farm Credit System Insurance Corporation, which was established in the late 1980s after the crisis in the farm economy. And that fund, of course, exists to ensure the banks, should there be a situation where they were not able to repay their loans. So, I can't really speak to other agencies and what they do. Of course, the FDIC has an insurance fund that is not unlike what the Farm Credit System Insurance Fund is.
Okay. I want to move on to something that will more than likely come up in the next panel, but I think you are obviously someone who should be given an opportunity to comment on it. And it relates to Cobank's role in two transactions. One was a finance package with Horizon, the other being a financing package with Frontier Communications. I'd like to get your perspective on that. Does Cobank, first, does Cobank have the authority to participate in those transactions? And did FCA have any role in approving those transactions?
The answer to your first question is yes, they did have the authority. And as you know, Congress gave the entities that we regulate the authority to engage in similar entity participation lending to be used as a risk mitigation tool. And we reviewed those transactions in complete detail and found that they met any reasonable reading of the statutory authority provided. Now, in the interest of full disclosure, I have to tell you that I was on the Ag Committee and the Subcommittee that had jurisdiction over credit issues at the time that the language was adopted, and I recall supporting it. However, I also have to say that it is not a model of drafting clarity, and I'm not sure anywhere else in federal statute you would even find the terms functional similarity. Even so, there are statutory limits, and those statutory limits include, for example, a single credit held by a system institution may not exceed 10% of total capital. A single system institution and all system institutions combined must hold less than 50% of the credit. A system institution may not exceed 15% of its total assets in similar entity participations. And at the present time, system-wide, somewhere around 5% of the system's total assets are held in some form of similar entity participation. But we do examine, we do ensure that they are in compliance, and they are.
Thank you. I yield the balance of my time. Now recognize the Ranking Member for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bayerhelm, you mentioned the increased demand for loans with FSA. And, you know, we did the authorization, but did the appropriators provide sufficient funding to meet what you believe is going to be the demand in fiscal year 2015?
From what I understand, from the, you know, at least the preliminary numbers, both chambers have authorized the President's request for the $6.4 billion. So, in addition to that, previous appropriations bills have had language that provided for programs that are zero subsidy to get an additional 25%. Both our guaranteed farm ownership and our direct farm ownership for the first time ever are going to be zero-subsidy programs. So, the answer to your question is yes. $6.4 billion plus a 25% bump in both of those programs will actually exceed $7 billion, and we expect that to be sufficient. So the answer to your question is yes. $6.4 billion plus a 25% bump in both of those programs will actually exceed $7 billion, and we expect that to be sufficient.
And historically, in terms of the level of lending activity that's taking place, would you say that the trends, that the appropriations reflect the demand out there?
Absolutely. As I mentioned, in the previous four years, the programs have been overscribed. So we've always had periods-
So one could argue that maybe we should provide additional support for that effort, then?
That would be up to this body to decide.
No, I understand that part. Can you update us on where things are with the changes that were made, as I stated, as a result of the 2014 farm bill? In terms of the, especially the area where the interested, where the relending provision of the microloan program, when that will be up and running?
Yes.
Obviously, for young farmers and ranchers, that's a potential source of financing.
Yes, thank you for that question. We're in the process of drafting, you know, proposed regulations on how to implement that among the other discretionary provisions of the farm bill. That is one of the things we expect to, you know, have some clarity on by October of this year.
So for, before the end of this year?
Yes.
I mean, that's important. And then when would the ability for application take place? I mean, you know, let's figure, you got folks that are looking to maybe lease land or maybe to purchase a farming entity, and they're looking at next year is what they're looking at in the fall. So in the timelines for the applications to, for those who would be interested, would it be in a timely enough fashion so that they could possibly be able to participate in 2015 with the advantage of that microloan?
We would hope so. Once the regulations have been drafted, you know, we're going to have to work with-
Yeah, but there's a comment period, isn't there, in the federal register?
That's correct.
I mean, I'm trying to figure out the timeline.
Yeah, it'll be close, to answer your question. And we're going to make every effort with any changes to make them available for the 2015 lending season, but it'll be close.
Well, it's important. I mean, because, you know, you can get a loan in the middle of the year, but your past planning season, your past lot of, I mean, depending upon the nature of the agricultural enterprise, obviously.
I think the good part about it is, is that our program's still going to be there, you know, for those that need that credit. So if there is somebody that, you know, needs financing-
Have you done an estimate, an estimation of the potential demand out there for the microloans?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, we've been, we're right at the 7,200 mark right now. We did 3,500 the first year, and we're on pace to do about 4,500 this year. We would expect that demand to continue, especially, one of the things we're going to do is increase the loan limits from 35 to 50, or at least propose to increase to 50. So that'll increase the pool.
Ms. Thompson, and thank you, by the way, for your previous service to our country as a member of the House of Representatives, and it's good to see you here in your current role. In your opening statement, you talked about the nature of farm credit, but I would like you to give a better snapshot. I mean, today, from, for example, from the time when you served in Congress in the late 1980s, you want to give a comparative analysis in 30 seconds or less?
I can do that in 30 seconds or less. The farm credit system that today, the institutions that we regulate are much more professional, much more financially sound. It is an incredibly strong system of lending institutions, and part of that is the result of changes that were made by Congress in the late 1980s. But in terms of underwriting standards and reaching out to creditworthy eligible borrowers, I think the system has strengthened incredibly, and I'm proud to be a regulator of the system.
Thank you very much. My time has expired, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The gentleman's time has expired. Now recognize the gentleman from Iowa, Mr. King, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank all the witnesses for your testimony, and I turn first to Ms. Long Thompson. And I'd like to just get some definitions down to understand the parameters that we're working with here. And could you define a little bit more clearly the mission statement of farm credit?
May I ask the mission statement of the farm credit system or the mission statement of the Farm Credit Administration?
I understand the mission statement of Farm Credit Administration, but the system and the, how to identify the borrowers?
The mission of the farm credit system is to provide credit to creditworthy eligible borrowers across the country for the purpose of making credit available for agriculture, but also for strengthening rural America.
And there's, does that include a definition for small, beginning, young farmers?
Yes.
And so you just left that out. Does it also include for socially disadvantaged farmers?
All farmers who are creditworthy and eligible.
Okay.
And in fact, in, since my coming to the board, we have adopted a policy that requires in our examination, and our examiners take a look at how the system is doing in this regard, but that borrowers of all types, and they are to have a diversity and inclusion provision, both in their marketing, so in reaching out to borrowers, but also in their human research.
All creditworthy with a diversity and inclusion. Is this statement is written and approved by whom? Not Congress, I take it? How is this arrived at?
The statement, the diversity and inclusion regulation, that's a regulation that we issued.
And who produces that document, then? Who are the people that sign off on it?
It would be the Board of the Farm Credit Administration.
Okay, and it's an authority that's at least presumed granted by Congress?
I missed that.
It's an authority that's at least presumed granted by Congress to make that decision. And you mentioned also that the share of the farm credit debt was 46% in your testimony?
Of farm credit real estate debt. Overall, including production loans, it's about 41%.
What was the 46?
The 46 is real estate.
Just real estate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can you tell us about the trend of farm credit debt? The 46% today, what would that have been if you go back, say, 10 years? What has been the trend?
I will have to ask my staff. I don't have that trend for the last 10 years, but if you'll give me a second, I think I can give you the answer.
I would.
Thank you. Regarding total debt, and that would be real estate and operating loans, it's gone from about 35% to 41% in the last 10 years.
Okay, and on the real estate debt, we would just anticipate, without turning back, a similar trend. And who holds the balance of that? If it's 46% on real estate, then where's the other 54%?
The majority of that comes from independent banks, or from banks, many from independent community banks.
Okay. And then why would a, why, I'd like to turn to Mr. Kaufman. Thank you very much. Mr. Kaufman, you testified that it's a relatively competitive environment, lending environment? That seemed like a qualifying word, and I'd ask if you could define that to me. Would the word relatively seem to be a qualifier?
We have heard from our bank contacts that it is a competitive lending environment in the sense that there are agricultural lending activity has been strong and repayment rates have been strong. So competitive in that sense, that they have been, we have heard from bank contacts that not only have they been competitive perhaps with other commercial banks, but also with farm credit institutions that are lending in those areas overall.
What about interest rates? Do you know of any banks that are lending at a lower rate than farm credit?
I can't speak to that specifically. I would say anecdotally, we have heard some bankers say that they may be reluctant in some cases to reduce interest rates beyond a certain point, taking a more cautious approach perhaps in some areas as it relates to, particularly on the farm real estate side.
Sounds like a qualified answer. Do you know of any cases, or even any narrative about banks that are lending at a lower rate than farm credit?
Again, I do not know of any specific cases.
You do not? I would turn to Ms. Thompson. Do you?
I can tell you that I know of instances where that's the case. And I'm wondering if you're, if you're expressing or leading to expressing concerns about interest rates that are charged in the system, because they are required to be competitive, but they are, they are not to engage in predatory-
Ms. Thompson, I just, as our clock is running, I'll just conclude this, that I am concerned about the competition side of this and the mission creep of farm credit, although I'm grateful for the service that you all provide. Thank you very much, and I yield back.
May I answer?
It's fine. Go ahead.
Thank you. Whenever there is a concern expressed from someone across the country regarding predatory pricing in the system, we take that very seriously, and we do examine it, take a look at it. And if it were to occur, we certainly would then take the appropriate correct, action to get that corrected. But competitive is not by definition predatory, as you very well know.
Agreed. Thank you.
The gentleman's time has expired, and recognize the gentleman from Oregon for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Thompson, how did Farm Credit Services, particularly Farmer Mac, fare during the Great Recession, particularly compared to other banks and commercial institutions?
The farm credit system did very well, including Farmer Mac. Some of the challenges that they faced was, were access to capital in the markets, liquidity, but not issues regarding the safety and soundness of their particular operations. They did very well.
Did you lose any institutions under your purview as a result of the recession?
We did not lose any institutions as a result of the recession. There have been some mergers that have occurred since, but that was occurring beforehand.
Right, right. When Dodd-Frank was written, this group and the entire Ag Committee spent a lot of time trying to differentiate between institutions of systemic risk, protect end-users from Similarly, in Dodd-Frank itself, a lot of the small independent banks were never part of the problem, tried to make sure they were not burdened with burdensome regulations. And yet, the regulators in FDIC, Comptroller, Credit Union have been frankly very overzealous. And I hear reports again and again how the small independent folks are seeing the same degree of regulatory overreach that was only maybe even intended for these big systemic risk institutions. How has Farm Credit Services fared in that system? How are you keeping your regulators under control, if I may?
Well, as you know, for the most part, the system was not included in Dodd-Frank reforms, and you know that very well. It is my sense that we are not overregulating, but the one thing that we have to be very careful about in overseeing the farm credit system is that it doesn't have the potential for diversifying its portfolio in the same way that banking institutions are able to do. And so we have to be very conscious of what that means in terms of things like capital requirements and liquidity. One of the reasons the system is strong is that the ag economy has been quite strong over the, overall, over the last 20 years. There have been some pockets of issues, but we take, we take the regulatory responsibilities very seriously, recognizing that overregulation can in fact impede their ability to do their job and fulfill their mission.
Very good, very, very good. Mr. Byerhelm, to that point, I come from the Pacific Northwest, and our nursery industry was particularly a hard hit in the recession. Our seed producers were particularly a hard hit. Christmas tree, we have some folks that are still, you know, just trying to get their feet underneath them. How are they faring in the farm credit system at this point in time?
I don't have specifics for that particular enterprise, but I could certainly get those for you. Certainly, there are eligible enterprises for our loans, both our direct and guaranteed loans.
All right, appreciate that. And then can you explain a little bit about, you alluded to this in your testimony, how a farmer graduates, if you will, to a commercial lending? What you see as your main role, you apply, you sort of force people, well, encourage people to graduate. That's the way it's supposed to work. Could you explain that more for us?
Yes, obviously, we don't compete with the commercial lending industry. So most of the customers that come to us, their balance sheets are not strong enough to go to commercial lending. Perhaps their cash flows don't have the debt repayment capacity. So what we do is try to work with them to improve their balance sheets, their cash flows, and also their production skills. Our loan officers actually work very closely with them, provide technical assistance. And at any point during their tenure with us, we feel that those three indicators have risen to the level that commercial lenders will make them a loan. As you said, we politely ask them to go to a commercial lender, pay us off, and, you know, move on to the next customer.
And that's to make sure that your capital can flow into the next young farmer or rancher maybe coming on.
Absolutely. Yes, yes.
Mr. Kaufman, one of the problems, I'm also on the Small Business Committee, and one of the problems we've seen there is that, you know, there are a lot of demand for small business loans, a lot of demand for, you know, farm credit service loans, particularly in tough economies, as people figure out, maybe I'm going to start a business, start a farm, or, you know, get my dad's ranch going again. But one of the problems we've seen, or at least I would call it a problem, is that while there are, the creditworthiness of some of the loans have actually gotten a little better, there are much fewer loans made. The Small Business Administration is making bigger loans to fewer people, and the real small businesses sometimes have a tough time, they're still having a very tough time getting the credit they need. How would you compare that to what's going on with Farm Credit Services, the medium and larger size ranch or farm operations versus the small folks that are trying to get started? What's the portfolio look like for FSA and stuff?
I would say in general, from the commercial lending institutions, what we've seen has been some producers, in terms of the scale of agriculture, capital requirements are quite large. I think that we have seen, even the USDA census has revealed, there's been a bit of a shift to the large producers, but also a number of increasing small producers. So I think that there have been some small producers that have been able to obtain the credit that they need, albeit in some cases maybe needing to provide more collateral if they have, if they're perceived as being a more risky borrower.
All right, all right, thank you. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
The gentleman Yields now recognize the gentleman from Texas, Mr. Conway, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. Ms. Thompson, Long Thompson, the FCA is currently working on a regulatory scheme to impose margin requirements on derivative transactions. We've just passed the House yesterday, 4413, which amends the CEA that would provide that initial and variation margin requirement shall not apply to a swap in which one of the counterparties to the swap is not a financial institution and qualifies for the end-user clearing exemption. If enacted into law, how would that change the FCA's efforts to impose margin requirements on end-users?
If you'll give me just a minute, I want to turn to our general counsel.
This is actually a very simple answer. It's going to be consistent with the law. And we will make sure that we are working with the other regulators, but the stage that we are in the process, there's nothing definitive for me to provide in terms of specifics.
Okay.
But we will make sure that it is consistent with the law.
That's like art.
I'm sorry.
I mean, that statement is like trying to decide what's pretty and what's not pretty. I mean, I understand-
It will be pretty, I promise you.
Okay. Mr. Byerhelm, you had a comment that you provide credit to borrowers. Can you give us the distinction between, or the difference between your words, not qualify for commercial credit due to lender standards, but otherwise creditworthy? Can you help me understand that?
Well, most commercial lenders require a, some sort of equity position, maybe let them qualify for at least 30 or 40% equity position and a debt service capacity of probably 20, 25% in excess of what their, you know, expenses will be. So when a customer comes in and doesn't meet those qualifications, they can come to FSA. When I say they're creditworthy otherwise, it means they have good credit history, they can show repayment, perhaps not at the 20% level, but something less than that, and they don't have the required equity position to go to a commercial lender.
Okay. All right. Also, Ms. Thompson, you're redoing the capital requirements. You've got regulations out right now. Can you give me some sense of what the response has been from the regulated industry in respect to your changes?
At the stage of the process that we're in, I don't have any summarizing data on what the responses are, because it's still in the comment period.
Okay, but, well, maybe some other panelists to get to that. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. I yield back.
The gentleman Yields now recognize the gentleman from Florida for five minutes, Mr. Yoho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, panelists, for being here. Agriculture is dear to my heart, because I like to eat mainly. But I've been involved in it since I was about 16 years old. And, you know, the farm credit service or system has done a remarkable job. But I kind of want to expand on what Mr. King was bringing up about mission creep. You know, have we overgone where we need to go with the farm credit system, has it overstepped its boundaries? You know, knowing when it first started in some form in 1916, when we had about 32% of the population of America involved in agriculture. Today, we have roughly maybe 1% write as agriculture is their source of income, with 2% of Americans, America's population involved or living on a farm. And the role seems like of the farm credit system has grown. And I get, I don't want to say complaints, I get inquiries about the farm credit system competing with the small rural banks. And I want to build off what Dr. Schrader said, my fellow veterinarian here in Congress, on the rules and regulations Dodd-Frank you brought up, that you're pretty much excluded from those. All right? And the small community banks that don't have a large portfolio, they're bound by those, and they're restricted by those, and it really puts them at a disadvantage. And some of the conversations we have is that the farm credit system can be more competitive because of the operating expenses. How do you view that?
I think that's a very good question, and it has a certain complexity to it. My experience as a regulator of the system has informed me that there really hasn't been significant, if any, mission creep in the farm credit system. But it is a balancing act because, and it's a balancing act not just for the system, but for the regulatory agency as well.
Can I interrupt here? Let me ask you.
Sure.
In your portfolio, I think you said 41% of your assets are in farm, or not assets, your loans are in agricultural land, correct?
No, I'm, what I said was that-
And 46% was?
No, what I said was that of the farm loans across the country, 41% of those are made by the farm credit system.
Okay. Go ahead, then, on what you were talking about as far as your mission.
And so the challenge for any regulatory body is to find the balance. We work very hard with a very professional staff of examiners, regulatory policy folks, lawyers, to ensure that whatever business is engaged in by the system is consistent with the law. And I think, I think that the agency has done a good job of that.
Ms.?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, and I was going to ask Mr. Kaufman his opinion on that.
Okay. But it, but I think in a market economy, as we have, in a capitalist economy, there's going to be competition, and I think that competition benefits, it benefits business.
Well, since you brought that up, in a market economy, you know, in the free market, they're kind of, like a community bank, they're kind of dependent upon themselves, whereas in the farm credit system, you've got the backing of the United States government. It seems that is not quite as fair or as equitable as it should be in a free market economy.
Well, let me clarify, the system that we regulate is private sector-
Mm-hmm.
And- Well, let me clarify. The system that we regulate is private sector, and it gets its funding by selling securities in the marketplace.
But yet, if you don't have to abide by Dodd-Frank financial regulations, you're talking about being fair. My time's, we got about a minute left.
But we do have a book this thick of laws, of statute, that we have to ensure is followed by the farm credit system.
I've heard from the other banks, they've got one about this thick. Mr. Kaufman, what's your opinion on that?
Ours is getting thicker.
We do hear similar inquiries from community bankers asking similar questions. I would corroborate what Ms. Thompson had said in terms of the split between real estate and non-real estate at community banks. You do typically see a bit more lending activity in the non-real estate space, and that's been a trend that we've seen here recently. But we do hear similar inquiries from community bankers.
Would the gentleman yield?
Yes, sir.
If, I understand you're questioning correctly, you're attempting to try to get a snapshot on the balance of these lending activity between the farm credit and between the private sector institutions, correct?
Well, what I'd like to do is kind of, do we need a farm credit system as big as we do now compared to what we did when we had 32% of the population involved in farming?
Oh, I, yeah.
And today, we've got less than 1% actively involved in farming.
But I guess with FSA especially, I mean, there is a partnership.
Right.
If I understand it correctly, I mean, with these community banks that are the private sector, that are banks made up of people we know in our communities.
Right.
You're providing, in essence, the secondary mortgages or the guarantees on these loans for the community banks in many instances. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Up to, we do have a restriction requirement that they be family-sized farms. So, to some extent, for the smaller operators, but for the larger operators, there would not be a comparable, you know, an opportunity to participate in FSA programs.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask something on family-sized farms?
Thank the gentleman for yield.
Yes, sir. On the family-sized farms, what is the definition of that? Is that just one person with a tractor, or?
I think it's back to the what's pretty and not pretty question. A general definition of family-sized farm is that the applicant themselves, whether it's a corporation or individual, whatever, provide the majority of the labor required and all of the management required to run the operation.
Thank you.
That's the general definition.
The gentleman's time has expired. Just for clarification, Ms. Long Thompson, can you leave ag space at any point in time?
I missed that question.
Can you leave ag space at any point in time? That's your core mission, correct?
We're the regulator, the farm credit system.
Farm credit system.
Yes. They do have, as authorized by Congress, the ability to make rural housing loans. Beyond that, well, and then the Title III lending authority is for rural electric co-ops, for telephone co-ops, for co-op business, various kinds of co-op business.
What we're really talking about is a sort of a broad definition of what constitutes agriculture versus non-agricultural portfolio. And I don't want to encroach on Mr. Rogers' time, so I'll recognize the gentleman from Alabama for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's what I was going to ask about. And I was late, and I'm sorry. And I know that Mr. Crawford visited this topic earlier. But one of the primary criticisms I get about the farm credit system is issuing loans in non-agriculture. And so, do you know what percentage of the loan portfolio of the farm credit system is issued to non-farm entities?
I think it probably would be best for me to get a detailed breakdown for you, but it is primarily agriculture and ag-related. It is agriculture. And let me also say that even though the system did not fall, for the most part, under the jurisdiction of Dodd-Frank, that it, there are other kinds of rules that statute requires. For example, the territories, the districts that are established. So, there are a number of restrictions in the farm credit system that simply are not restrictions in the banking sector. And I also think that there's a very strong case to be made for a group of farmers going together and setting up a cooperative model of lending, particularly when there is not always access in traditional banking.
Now, I represent a very rural congressional district. There's access to credit in our communities. I've been a supporter of the farm credit system, but, you know, it's pretty hard for me to explain. I can't explain why you're financing a merger deal with Verizon. I mean, just, or this farm credit system is. So, I guess I'm looking for why. I recognize that from a making money standpoint, you want to do that, but, and while it's not illegal to do it, why would you do it? When, you know, Mr. Kaufman talked about what you're really there for is to take the shaky young farmer and help get him on stable footing so then they can go into the commercial lending. Why would farm credit get outside the farm world for lending?
Verizon does provide service to rural communities. And in the Title III lending authority, loans are made for co-op-owned rural utility services that are member-owned. And this similar entity provision that was included in the law back in the early 1990s was included for the purpose of mitigating risk in a lending institution's portfolio. If you felt that it was important to remove that particular provision, Congress could certainly do that.
I think that we may have to visit that, because this really is pretty indefensible in my world. So, with that, I thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Gentleman yields back. Seeing no further, oh, we have one member, the gentle lady from New Mexico, recognized for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank the panel for your testimony and presence here today. Mr. Barrowhelm, I want to talk about the loan application process and tie it to what I know many states are concerned about and you're concerned about as well, which is the graying of our, the aging of our farmers and ranchers. So, we've got in New Mexico, which I'm sure you're aware, the highest percentage of older farmers and ranchers. We use the 65 age and up as the qualifier. If you go to 60, our percentage rate is bolstered, unfortunately, in the wrong direction, even more so. We're at 37%. That's seven points higher than the national average. Further, we expect that half of those 65 and older farmers to retire over the next decade. So, we're very interested in our state at making sure that there's a sense of urgency by USDA, a sense of urgency by everybody in the state, to do what we can to grow, if you'll pardon the pun, younger farmers and ranchers, and an interest in the agricultural industry. And I know that you've, you know, ramped up your efforts to reach out to this demographic. But I continue to hear from young farmers and ranchers that it's not enough, that the application process for loans and support is arduous at best. And I want to give you a couple of examples. I want to talk about, and if you could give me some specifics, about what we might do to make that simpler, more effective, and to really encourage folks to get the resources that they need and the educational support and expertise that they need to actually enter into the industry. So, for example, in New Mexico, even if you go online, and I realize that you've now created an online sort of resource directory, you got to be able to go online, but even then, you're still going to have to take an application. You can't do any of it online. You have to go in person to an office. In New Mexico, there are only four offices. They're all in the southern part of the state. That means for some people, they're going to have to make a six, seven, eight-hour drive, make an appointment in one of those four offices. And then, as I understand it, even if you look and get the sort of guide on the online application, you're talking about making several trips to that loan office over periods of several months. And what happens, I think, is that people give up. And they don't get access to the support, the expertise, the credit, the resources, or anything else to engage in this industry. Can you give me a sense about what we might do in the rural states to make sure that we are doing more than just creating the online resource directory? And I don't want to minimize that that's a step in the right direction. But it isn't getting to this demographic actually getting what they need so that they enter the agricultural business.
Yes, thank you so much for that. And you're entirely correct. And I think the, you know, the situation gets exacerbated a little bit when you get out into the West and you have these, you know, huge geographical regions. And then when you combine that with, you know, continued budget-constrained environment in which, you know, we've lost 25% of our employees in the last four years, and, you know, had to restrict our footprint a little bit in rural America. So, to try to respond to your question, one of the things are, we're working very hard to create an online application to reduce some of the, you know, repeated visits that you have to go to the office. So, it's our goal and our hope that in the very near future, that somebody's going to be able to apply, going to be able to do a lot of the, you know, the pre-stuff. You know, at some point, we've got to have that face-to-face.
And I appreciate that. Can you give me a sense of the timeframe? And I don't mean to sound like I'm pushing back. I know that you've talked about the streamlined process in your testimony, but that's only for repeat loan applicants. I can do a loan, and I can get prescreened at my bank in 13 steps. Probably, I could do it while I was sitting here in this committee. And just pull up my personal account information and send a loan application to my banking, bank of choice. And in probably before I finish my 46 seconds, I get an answer about how likely I am and what else they need. We could be using colleges and universities, and we can be using extension services, and we can be using all state government partners and local government partners, so that you have a much broader footprint in this regard. So, talk to me if you can, I know I'm over time, Mr. Chairman, about how long before you get the entire application online. And please tell me you're thinking about really broadening your partnerships to achieve the goals that we're interested in.
Yeah, as I said, I can't give you an exact timeline on the online application. It would certainly be my hope that sometime in the next 12 months, we'd have that done. The other thing that we are doing in the farm bill, we were given authority to do pilot projects. And one of the things we want to look at is exactly what you're talking about, is partnering with CDFIs, you know, local CBOs, and have those folks help us in reaching out to individuals in remote areas, actually underwriting loans, bringing to those to actually leverage their expertise. So, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that's one of our objectives under the Pilot Project Authority.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, can I make one quick statement? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I really appreciate that. And this is, I'm probably going to send you in this terrible circle. I'm an old bureaucrat myself, and I know that we can, we can just, finding the right size. So, I applaud that effort. And I know that we want to make sure that the loans that we provide are credible. But you have to also make this burden much smaller, because you could certainly make the argument that instead of having to figure out these partners and going out to nonprofits and funding them and supporting them to do the loan application, wouldn't it be much smarter and swifter to make it less burdensome so that we don't need so much stuff without minimizing that you have to assess the risk? So, I just want to push that balance is great, urgency really important here, and we stand ready to help you in any way that we can to make the difference.
Yeah, and thank you very much for that. And certainly, we'll continue to look at all ways to streamline the process. I do want to say, though, that because we make loans that are very highly leveraged, I mean, we can actually, if somebody wants to borrow $200,000 to buy a $200,000 piece of property, we can do the whole 100% financing, and their cash flow may have a 3% margin in it. So, as a consequence, we do have to spend some time, for the taxpayers' benefit, but even more importantly, for the customers' benefit, that we do not provide them financing, that they cannot repay and then wreck their credit. So, there's a fine line in there somewhere, but I appreciate your comments, and we will look into it.
I think the gentle lady, you know, the gentle lady from New Mexico makes a good point, that I think most of us on this committee serve a rural constituency. I would think that she brings a unique perspective in that she serves a remote constituency. And we've seen such consolidation with respect to FSA, office closures, and so on. The irony in this whole thing is that rural broadband has not kept pace. So, it's that much more challenging. And the point that she's made is very well noted. So, with that, I would recognize the gentleman from Virginia for five minutes, Mr. Gillette. Nope.
Okay. Seeing no further requests for time, we will dismiss this panel. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your testimony. And we certainly appreciate you being here. And we will prepare for the next panel. and take a minute to introduce those individuals. This is a bigger panel than the first one. We have a total of five. Mr. Bob Frazi, President and CEO of Mid-Atlantic Farm Credit, Westminster, Maryland. Mr. Timothy L. Busby, President and CEO, Farmer Mac. Mr. Leonard Wolfe, President and CEO, United Bank and Trust, Marysville, Kansas, on behalf of the American Bankers Association. Mr. Sean H. Williams, President and CEO, First National Bank of Winn, Winn, Arkansas, on behalf of the Independent Community Bankers of America. And finally, Mr. Brett Malone, Loan Officer, California Farm Link, Santa Cruz, California, on behalf of the National Sustainable Agriculture Coalition. And it appears that we have all of our members seated. I would remind our members, just as I did the first panel, green is go. You're good to go. When you see yellow, step on the gas. And red indicates your time has expired. So, with that said, we will start by introducing Mr. Bob Frazi, President and CEO, Mid-Atlantic Farm Credit, ACA, Westminster, Maryland, on behalf of the farm credit system. Mr. Frazi, you're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the subcommittee. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today on behalf of the farm credit system. At Mid-Atlantic Farm Credit, we are part of the nationwide farm credit system that's privately owned by farmers, ranchers, agricultural cooperatives, rural utilities, and others in rural America. Mid-Atlantic is owned by more than 10,000 farmers that borrow from us in Delaware, parts of Maryland, West Virginia, Virginia, and Pennsylvania. I report to an 18-member board, 16 of whom are farmer directors elected by the borrower owners of our cooperative. The board sets the policies that guide our institution. Farm credit funds its lending by marketing system-wide debt securities to the investing public. We do not have access to deposits guaranteed by the FDIC and backed by the U.S. Treasury as a source of funding. The farm credit system remains financially strong. Our earnings have been good, loan volume has continued to grow, and our capital at the end of the first quarter this year was 16.6% of total assets. The investors that buy our bonds want to see this strength so that they'll continue to make their capital available to farmers, ranchers, and rural America through us. Being a cooperative, we share our profits directly through patronage dividends with the farmers who borrow from us. In 2013, Mid-Atlantic distributed nearly $19 million, and the system over $1 billion in earnings as patronage dividends. This puts money back in the pockets of farmers, and that supports rural communities. System institutions are regulated by the Farm Credit Administration, and I'm on the receiving end of their attention, so I'll let you know that they are doing their job thoroughly. The Farm Credit Act makes clear that our responsibility is to meet the needs of all types of agricultural producers that have a basis for credit. Our customer base reflects the fact that farming has changed dramatically since the system was established almost 100 years ago. Our territory contains a diversity of farming operation that is today's agriculture. We serve Maryland and Delaware poultry-producing operations that are sophisticated, complex businesses, as well as startup vegetable growers in Virginia, who are producing food for farmers markets right here in Washington. If agriculture is going to be able to continue to feed a planet of 9 billion people in the year 2050, it's important that all types, all sizes of farms, have access to capital and the infrastructure to support them. We're focused on doing all that we can to help with that. One way we're helping is through the Start Right program we created in 2008 to address the challenges faced by young, beginning, and small agricultural producers. Last year, we developed a Farm Fresh Financing Program, created to help producers involved in local foods and sustainable agriculture. An example of Farm Fresh Financing is the Urban Tree Connection in Chester, Pennsylvania. They've been building gardens and vacant city lots for over 10 years, growing fresh produce for their neighborhoods. We helped them purchase equipment and have provided a revolving... We helped them purchase equipment and have provided a revolving line of credit, so that they'll continue to grow and serve more communities. As of the end of May, we had over $57 million in loans in the Start Right program and over $83 million in Farm Fresh Financing. Every Farm Credit Association has programs that are specifically targeted to serve these young, beginning and small farmers. During 2013, the system made 8.3 billion in new loans to young farmers, and almost $11 billion to beginning farmers, and $11.4 billion to small farmers. System institutions also deploy capital in support of rural communities, making investments in our borrowers' communities that will help to make them places where their children and grandchildren want to live. For example, the Farm Credit System provided $140 million to fund a rural business investment company that will begin operations this summer to save and create new jobs in rural communities. We're also very proud of a $250,000 Farm Credit Grant that has enabled the Farmer-Veteran Coalition to take a labeling program that was started in Kentucky to a national level. This will allow consumers to choose products produced by farmers that are veterans when they make purchases. Now, agriculture's experienced some very good years recently, however, some sectors have experienced stress, as we've heard earlier today. We've seen the protein sector that was hit hard by high feed costs, but we've seen improvements there recently. In the Midwest, there have been issues around land value inflation. Our institutions took aggressive steps to manage their lending programs to avoid taking one increased credit risk as land values have increased. We make our credit decisions based on repayment capacity, not inflating collateral values. Drought conditions are impacting many parts of the country. In California, the third consecutive year of drought and water restrictions posed significant risk to producers. Institutions there tell us that borrowers' liquidity will be helpful this year, but another dry year in 2015 is likely to create financial adversity for them. We'll work with those customers on a case-by-case basis to help them. In conclusion, the Farm Credit System continues to make credit available to all segments of agriculture. We cover the expense of being regulated by the government, we pay insurance premiums to protect investors, and we rely access on the debt markets and the building oversight of our farmer-owner directors. Mr. Chairman, thank you again for the opportunity to testify, and I'd be pleased to respond to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Frazi. Now, recognize Mr. Timothy L. Busby, President and CEO, Farmer Mac. You're recognized for five minutes.
Chairman Crawford and distinguished members of the subcommittee, thank you for your invitation to appear today to testify on behalf of the Federal Agricultural Mortgage Corporation, which is commonly known as Farmer Mac. My name is Tim Busby, and I'm the President and CEO of Farmer Mac. Farmer Mac exists to deliver capital and liquidity to rural America and offers a variety of financing options tailored to the needs of its customers, America's rural lenders. In Farmer Mac's role as the secondary market for rural America, we work closely with all types and sizes of rural lenders. Through alliances and partnerships, we work with over 900 institutions, including commercial and community banks, Farm Credit System institutions, insurance companies and rural electric lender cooperatives. By working with such a vast network, Farmer Mac introduces additional competition into the marketplace to ensure that your constituents are receiving the lowest interest rates and most favorable terms possible for their financing needs. To fund the needs of our lending partners, Farmer Mac raises money in the capital markets as investors have looked to Farmer Mac as one vehicle to invest in rural America. Investors are attracted to the fact that today's agricultural producers are more efficient and productive than ever, more sophisticated in their financing arrangements and are providing quality commodities at competitive prices. One indication of this interest in investing in rural America is the regular demand for Farmer Mac's debt and equity securities. As an example, Farmer Mac has seen great demand in its auction of over $250 million of securities during just the past three months. These securities have attracted competitive bids from multiple financial institutions, driving down Farmer Mac's cost of funds. Lower-cost funding for Farmer Mac directly benefits your farmers, ranchers and rural utility cooperatives in the form of lower interest rates on products financed by Farmer Mac. With regard to credit, the quality of Farmer Mac's portfolio remains a great story. We are extremely proud of our credit profile, and it will continue to be the cornerstone of our success in the future. Currently, our overall borrower delinquency rate on the loans in our $14.1 billion portfolio is only 1/5 of 1%. That said, Farmer Mac understands that agriculture is cyclical, with many diverse industries that respond in different ways to changes in economic conditions. We take pride in the diversified nature of our loan portfolio that ranges from almond groves in California to wheat, corn and soybean crops in the Midwest, and from cattle ranches in the Southwest to electric distribution cooperatives in the Southeast and across America. We have found over the years that this diversification serves us well as the inevitable cycles of weather and commodity prices impact profits in agricultural industries and geographies. As we look forward, although farm incomes are projected to decrease in 2014 compared to 2013, they're still very high from a historical perspective and will be above the 10-year average. In Farmer Mac's experience, farmers and ranchers today generally have stronger balance sheets than in the past, with higher working capital and lower leverage. In the agricultural lending space, there is a great competition, particularly for the most successful producers, who have become more sophisticated in their financing and are able to demand lower rates and more favorable terms. Very often, these borrowers are prudently choosing to finance farm purchases and refinancings with long-term fixed-rate mortgages to lock in low and known interest costs. I realize there is concern about the agricultural land value increases experienced over the past several years, but recent market activity suggests that land values have moderated, most notably in those areas that experienced the greatest increases in recent years, such as the Midwest. Although lower commodity prices and increases in interest rates could put downward pressure on the value of farmland, Farmer Mac does not expect a repeat of the 1980s when agricultural land values collapsed. Fortunately, we see what others in the rural lending industry have observed, that farmers and ranchers simply are not taking on as much debt as they had in the past. In summation, Farmer Mac continues to provide a stable source of liquidity, capital and risk management tools to help rural lenders meet the financing needs of their customers. With a diverse array of lending products and sources of capital, Farmer Mac is well-positioned to provide rural America with the sophisticated and low-cost products and services demanded by today's rural borrowers. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Now, recognize President and CEO, United Bank and Trust, Marysville, Kansas, on behalf of American Bankers Association. Mr. Leonard Wolf, you're recognized for five minutes.
Chairman Crawford and members of the subcommittee, my name is Leonard Wolf, and I am the President of United Bank and Trust in Marysville, Kansas. We are the largest commercial agricultural lender in Kansas, second only to the Farm Credit System. I'm also currently serving as the Chairman of the Kansas Bankers Association, and I serve as Vice Chairman of the American Bankers Association Agricultural Credit Task Force. I appreciate the opportunity to present the views of the ABA on credit conditions and credit availability in rural America. The topic of today's hearing is very timely. The agriculture economy has been performing extremely well. Farm and ranch incomes for the past five years have been some of the best in history. With the new farm bill in place, farmers, ranchers and their bankers have certainty from Washington about future agricultural policy. Interest rates continue to be at or near record lows, and the banking industry has the people, capital and liquidity to help American farmers sustain this excellent agricultural economy. Banks continue to be the first place that farmers and ranchers turn when looking for agricultural loans. In fact, more farmers and ranchers receive credit from their banking industry than from any other source today. In 2013, farm banks, which the ABA defines as any bank with more than 14% of their loans made to farmers or ranchers, increased agricultural lending 9% to meet these rising credit needs, and now provide nearly $90 billion in total farm loans. Farm banks are an essential resource for small farmers, holding $45 billion in small farm loans and $12 billion in micro-small farm loans. These farm banks are healthy, well-capitalized and stand ready to meet the credit demands of our nation's farmers, large and small. I would like to thank Congress and especially the agricultural committees for repealing borrower term limits on USDA Farm Service Agency guaranteed loans. Banks work closely with the USDA to make additional credit available by utilizing the guaranteed farm loan programs. The repeal of borrower limits on USDA's Farm Service Agency guaranteed loans has allowed farmers to continue to access credit from banks like mine as they grow, ensuring credit access for farmers across the country. We remain concerned with certain areas of the agricultural credit market. In particular, we believe that the Farm Credit System, a government-sponsored entity, has veered away from its intended mission and now represents an unwarranted risk to taxpayers. The Farm Credit System was founded in 1916 to ensure that young, beginning and small farmers and ranchers had access to credit. It has since grown into a $261 billion behemoth. To put this into perspective, if the Farm Credit System were a bank, it would be the ninth-largest bank in the United States and larger than 99.9% of banks in the country. This system operates as a government-sponsored entity and represents a risk to taxpayers the same way that Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac do. The Farm Credit System benefits from significant tax breaks valued at $1.3 billion in 2013, giving it a significant edge over private sector competitors. Moreover, the Farm Credit System enjoys government backing formalized by the creation of a $10 billion line of credit with the U.S. Treasury in 2013. The Farm Credit System has moved significantly from its charter to serve young, beginning and small farmers, and now primarily serves large, established farms who could easily obtain credit from the private sector. In fact, the majority of Farm Credit System loans outstanding are in excess of $1 million. Any farmer able to take in over $1 million in debt is not a small farmer. Moreover, small borrowers accounted for less than 16% of all new Farm Credit System loans in 2013. Our nation's farmers and ranchers are a critical resource to our economy, ensuring that they continue to have access to adequate credit is essential for the well-being of our whole nation. America's banks remain well-equipped to serve the borrowing needs of farmers of all sizes. An important step in ensuring credit availability is to review entities such as the Farm Credit System and ensure that they stick to their charter of helping young, beginning and small farmers. Thank you, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf, and now pleased to recognize one of my constituents who made the trip from Arkansas, President and CEO of the First National Bank of Winn, Winn, Arkansas. On behalf of the Independent Community Bankers of America, Mr. Sean Williams, you're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the invitation to be here today and testify. I'm Sean Williams, President and CEO of the First National Bank of Winn in Winn, Arkansas, and I'm testifying today at your invitation on behalf of the Independent Community Bankers of America. Our bank was established in 1915, nearly 100 years ago, and we have branches in five communities, 80 employees and approximately $285 million in assets. 70% of our $150 million loan portfolio serves farmers. The remainder serves businesses that farmers depend on. We're one of the largest ag-focused lenders in the state of Arkansas and serve row crop agriculture, primarily rice, soybeans and corn, but cotton, wheat and milo are also grown in our area. America's 7,000 community banks, primarily in rural areas and at nearly every small town in rural America, do an outstanding job of providing the credit that farmers and businesses need to be successful in both good times and in bad. Banks under $1 billion in assets extend 50% of farm operating loans and 60% of farm real estate loans from the banking sector. Corn and soybean prices are declining. Livestock producers will do better, but drought is of concern. USDA projects net cash and net farm income down 22% to 27%. We expect about a 15% drop locally. 2014 expenses will be the second-highest level on record. Federal Reserve District Bank surveys project lower income, stable to lower land prices and higher loan demand and slower repayment rates. Rural credit markets remain highly competitive, and banks have ample liquidity for loan demand and want to make farm loans. We thank you for passing the new farm bill. Crop insurance funding is extremely important with 290 million acres insured. We urge Congress not to lower funding or coverage levels. Community bankers in rural communities continue to be hampered by the CFPB's definition of rule as it relates to home mortgage lending. We have urged the CFPB to fix the rule definition and to better align the QM and escrow rules to eliminate this confusion. ICBA's Ag Rural America Committee, with bankers in every geographical region, recently completed a survey. Credit is plentiful. Farmland prices are stable but could decline if commodity prices remain lower. Drought and weather conditions, problems in many states are concerning. The farm bill and crop insurance are vital to extending credit. Reference prices are adequate but won't always cover production costs, and more farm bill details and decision-making tools are needed. Bankers surveyed are alarmed by the Farm Credit System's cherry-picking. FCS leverages tax and funding advantages as a government-sponsored enterprise to undercut the loan rates on community banks' biggest and financially strongest customers and ignores less credit-worthy borrowers. The Farm Credit Act prohibits undercutting loan rates. Banks' larger, more stable borrowers are important to bank portfolios, allowing lending risks to be spread over both small and large operations. Losing the biggest and the best borrowers elevates risk in our portfolios. This diminishes banks' ability to serve agriculture, lessens credit expertise available to farmers, lessens credit choices for borrowers and lessens credit availability in rural America. The regulator, FCA, wants to allow FCS to broadly make non-farm loans. The FCS, when FCS will continue, they will continue to make farm loans. They want to also now cherry-pick the best non-farm loans from bank portfolios, although not authorized by law. FCA's proposed mission-related investments regulation would allow FCS lenders to seek approval for broad non-farm lending programs labeled as investments, loans for manufacturing, apartments, office buildings and hospitals. FCA's apparent lack of awareness of Co-Bank's $725 million Verizon loan is alarming. Verizon and Vodafone are located in New York City and in London. This isn't a rural loan and isn't authorized by the statute. FCA's excuse that this is allowed under the similar entity provision is not credible, as this provision isn't intended to allow enormous non-farm loans for hundreds of millions of dollars in size in non-rural areas in the world's largest cities to non-cooperatives or Fortune 500 corporations. We question FCA obtaining a $10 billion line of credit at a time of record profits without seeking congressional approval as recommended in the Brookings Institution report. Why did FCA act in secret and behind Congress's back? We strongly recommend a series of hearings reviewing these and other questions. FCS cherry-picks the best farm loans, they now seek to aggressively lend for non-farm purposes. This diminishes the number of rural lenders in America. FCS actions therefore threaten availability of credit to rural America. Is this why Congress created this GSC? Again, thank you, I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Now, recognize Mr. Brett Malone, Loan Officer, California Farm Link, Santa Cruz, California, on behalf of National Sustainable Agriculture Coalition. Mr. Malone, you're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, good morning, Chairman Crawford, members of the committee. It's an honor and a pleasure to address you this morning and talk about credit availability, in particular for small, beginning and socially disadvantaged farmers. Again, my name is Brett Malone, I'm a loan officer with California Farm Link. We are a nonprofit agricultural lender based in Santa Cruz, California, and again, a member of the National Sustainable Agriculture Coalition. Farm Link's mission is to link independent farmers in California with the land and financing that they need to be successful. We provide micro and small business loans, lines of credit and technical assistance. As a statewide nonprofit, are the farmers that benefit from our lending are primarily low to moderate-income farmers, about 1/3 are very low-income. We do take advantage of the federal programs available to us to serve this population, in particular, FSA Guarantee Program, the Rural Micro Entrepreneur Assistance Program, and recently, in the last year, became a certified community development financial institution, one of the few agriculturally-focused CDFIs in the country. The technical assistance services and financial products that we provide have a strong focus on high-risk populations. Farm Link's development services focus on farm financing, cash flow projections, credit counseling, financial management and land access strategies. We see this technical assistance as critical, not only to their business's success, but simply for them to be able to access the financing that they need to grow their businesses. Due to the cost of making these micro and small loans, most banks and commercial lenders, you know, don't want to make them. Building a pipeline of viable loans requires relationships with farming communities that commercial lenders generally lack. And again, it takes time in the form of technical assistance to get applicants to the point where they can actually qualify. As we've heard, the FSA microloan program became permanent, and we applaud that. I think this is really going to help increase access to capital for this farming population, in addition to lifting of the term limits, so that beyond the microloans, they'll be able to have full access to those programs. The increased, you know, we'd like to thank the Agricultural Appropriations Subcommittee for increasing funding for FSA direct loans, and also ask you to think about as FSA seeks to continue access to credit for farmers who have not historically used FSA loans, it'll be imperative to ensure FSA has the administrative and staffing resources to provide. it'll be imperative to ensure FSA has the administrative and staffing resources to serve this growing demand. As the first organization in the country to offer agricultural individual development accounts and a champion of the effort to establish a national program, we were pleased to see the reauthorization of this program in the 2014 Farm Bill, and we urge you to work with your colleagues on the Appropriations Committee to fund this program for $2.5 million in fiscal year '15. The 2014 Farm Bill authorized USDA to develop a whole farm revenue protection program, and this is a welcome addition to the Risk Management Toolkit for sustainable and organic producers, a segment of American agriculture that has historically been underserved by crop insurance. It's an important tool, crop insurance is, for lenders in mitigating their risk, and we urge you to work with USDA to expand the coverage of this program nationwide in our area. In particular, a lot of sustainable and organic growers have been left out of this program currently. Section 625 of the Farm Bill was revised and renewed. This is strategic economic and community development, and we encourage you to work with USDA in shaping how this program will serve the community and regional needs of agriculture, and particularly around sustainable and organic, where we're seeing significant growth in California. The Rural Micro Enterprise Assistance Program was reauthorized in the Farm Bill with $15 million in mandatory funding over the five-year cycle. We'd also like to see an additional $3 million per year in discretionary funding for that program to meet the demand. The microloan cooperative lending pilot project, which we heard a little bit about earlier as well, we think this is going to really help FSA reach the farmers that are difficult to reach, serve them in a way that's going to meet their needs. So we urge USDA to work with partners to shape that program in providing underwriting support, guarantees, and the like. Thank you, Chairman Crawford.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I once again want to thank all the witnesses. Now recognize the gentleman from Texas for five minutes, Mr. Conaway.
Thank you, Chairman, and gentlemen, thank you for being here. Mr. Franz, Franz, I'm sorry. In your written testimony, you had a couple of comments that I found interesting. One, that you're working under a 40-year-old law and that that is causing you challenges in your operations. Can you give us a couple of examples of where that's binding?
Sure. I mentioned that we're seeing agriculture evolve, and I also indicated that we're focusing on trying to respond to the credit needs of an evolving agriculture that includes more local sustainable foods, urban-oriented markets. And sometimes the authorities that we have are a bit challenging in terms of being able to provide financing that's needed to support that infrastructure.
So is this the rub that Mr. Wolf and Mr. Williams talked about? You're trying to push out beyond the original young farmer, beginning farmer, small farmer issue?
I think what we're talking about aligns very well with the young startup issue, the kind of operations we're talking about that are locally sourced, sustainable operations that are going to serve the farmers markets here in the area.
I'd like to visit with you about how the law itself is binding that up. You've also mentioned in your testimony, you've provided, the system provided financing to $4.7 billion in exports. Can you put some meat on the bone as to what that meant?
Yeah, that's, those are authorities that are provided for Co-Bank to authorize export financing related to farmers, cooperatives.
Directly related to rural America? That's where those exports are coming from? Is that rural America?
Correct. That's correct. It's all directly related to the ag production chain.
All right. Mr. Wolf, Mr. Williams, crop insurance, both move, I know Mr. Williams mentioned it. Can you talk about, is that a requirement on your loans to production farmers? And how, what, I get both of you on the hook here to comment about the importance of crop insurance and the other risk management tools under the Farm Bill?
Yes, crop insurance is extremely important to us in our portfolio. It's not required on 100% of our loans. I would guess about 90% of our loans is a factor, and so certainly, maybe even more than 90%, but crop insurance is extremely important in allowing us to make a decision and having a comfort level with where the income base is going to be for that operation. The Farm Bill, the target prices, is also something that's very important, but over the last 10 years, and certainly in the last two or three, I've seen crop insurance play a bigger role than it ever has in risk management for farmers and certainly important for banks.
Mr. Wolf?
We require crop insurance on 100% of our borrowers that we have, that we provide loans for crop production. And I asked our lenders just last year to find a borrower at any level that didn't have crop insurance. We couldn't find any in our banks, so it's close to 100% of our borrowers, no matter whether they borrow money for crop production, but they do participate in that program today.
All right. The FSA's under, and RMA are both trying to implement the changes to the Farm Bill. Any issues with the pace of that implementation and changes that are affecting your borrowers?
What change are you referring to, sir?
Say again?
What change?
Well, we made some changes to those risk management tools, and they're in the process of implementing those. Has it impacted this year's borrowings, lendings, and production agriculture? Is there something that they should be doing quicker than they're doing?
In our case, it has not. We typically do those on interim loans. We work very closely with USDA farm service agencies in our area, and if there's the high likelihood that that's going to happen, we go ahead and provide interim financing for those.
All right. So you're working with Mr. Williams. Anything going on out there that we need to know about?
It has not had an impact on us either. We've got about a $60 million operating loan portfolio, and about 20% of that volume is guaranteed by FSA guarantees, and so we've been able to do that. It's been very efficient and hadn't caused any problems for us.
All right. Mr. Malone, any issues with you?
Yeah, it's virtually nonexistent for our, the borrowers that we serve, and that's why we'd like to see it go nationwide as soon as possible.
Mr. Franz, quickly, you keep 100% of your loans on your balance sheet. Is that a requirement, or why do you do that?
We keep loans on our balance sheet for a couple of reasons. One, because we're cooperative and we want our members to benefit from the ability to have their loans on a balance sheet and receive patronage benefits. There are times that we may sell loans into secondary market for risk management purposes, but substantially, all we keep on our balance sheet.
All right. Thank you. You go back.
Gentleman yields back, and now recognize the gentleman from Florida, Mr. Yoho, for five minutes. Dr. Yoho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Let me see. Let me get back to my questions here. You were talking about, or let me ask you, is it Frazi? Frazi, Mr. Frazi. Do you guys classify underperforming loans and Farmer Mac the same way as Dodd-Frank in commercial loans used to do it? Like, say I borrowed $500,000 on a piece of property and was farming it, paid it off, paid on it on a five-year note. Say I paid three years on it, and I've got to pay down to 350. Land prices dropped to where the value of the land is now, say, 250. Traditionally, or with the Dodd-Frank, that was considered an underperforming loan, even though I didn't make a, miss a payment. Do you guys, in the Farmer Mac program, evaluate loan that way as underperforming?
We use a risk rating system that's consistent with other financial institutions. It's a 14-point rating system that looks at the probability of default. We look at our loss given default, and ultimately, we have to comply with the standards that our financial statements are audited by external auditors, PricewaterhouseCoopers.
All right. Mr. Wolf, how about you and your loan portfolio? If you have a loan in that kind of a situation, that illustration?
Well, we would recognize it as a troubled asset, if you will, and we would reserve higher for that, but no, we wouldn't just buy the fact that it's under collateralized and show it as a default.
Okay, because in some of the banking situations, correct me if I'm wrong, I know they looked at it that way, and they said, you have to get these off the book because it's an underperforming based on the rules of the Dodd-Frank. Now, they may have corrected that, I heard, in some of the smaller banks.
I think that applies to residential real estate loans, but not necessarily to ag loans.
Okay. Let me ask Mr. Wolf and Mr. Williams. Do you feel you're in direct competition with Farmer Mac?
Well, not with Farmer Mac. No, Farmer Mac, that's what we do.
Farm credit?
Yes. Farm credit is our largest competitor. We compete with local banks every day, but Farm Credit is our largest competitor and our biggest competition.
Have you ever lost a loan based on competitive interest rates where they, they're more competitive than the interest rates that you can charge?
Today?
Yes.
Oh, I did. Yeah, we do every day, not every day.
What causes that? Why is there that discrepancy? Why can you not adjust your interest rates where they can, or they can be more competitive?
Well, in Kansas, we have a state income tax that's applied to banks called a privilege tax. That's 4.375. We're also subject to 34% federal income tax, and so when we have to give them a 38% head start, it does create some added competition for us, yes.
What I'd like for all of you to do is give some recommendations of how we can make this more equitable so that there is not this competition, so that in the next Farm Bill, we can correct some of these inequities, so that it, when it comes out to pass, we won't have these discussions. Well, I've already addressed them. Is, I would love for you guys to enter in some recommendations so that we can address those before they become an issue. Mr. Malone, on the end, I've had some questions for you. In what you do, are, what is the amount of loans you give out in a year's time?
So last year, we've been lending since 2011. We've made about 90 loans, $1.5 million so far last year, 2013.
And 100% of that money comes from the federal government, right?
No. Probably about a third of it directly, and about the same amount as FSA guaranteed, but we have investors that are banks and foundations as well.
Okay. What is the failure rate of that?
We have a 2% default rate.
That's great.
So we made about $900,000 in loans last year. We're looking to make $1.25 million this year and doubling the number of loans that we're making to about 50 this year.
I don't really have any more questions, other than my goal is to make agriculture remain a strong sector, and by working together with the information and the suggestions that you have, we can make better policies up here that'll affect the availability of credit for our farmers to keep ag strong in this country so that we remain a leader in that. And I look forward to any comments, and I always feel that you can reach out to our office, and I appreciate you being here.
Gentleman yields back. Chair now recognizes Ranking Member Costa for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To any of the panel members, and maybe we start with Mr. Malone, the, we have a lot of things that we talked about earlier on that have been positive with the farm economy. And obviously, you know, with different regions of the country, especially the West as we talk, this multi-year drought has been devastating. And I guess I'd like to get a sense of, and of course, we have the opposite conditions along the Mississippi River where we've got floods that have been occurring. How do you believe that the impacts are going to, with floods and droughts taking place concurrently, the overall outlook on the farm economy this, at the end of this year? Have you guys begun to make some estimations?
So as you probably well know, there's a lot of geographic variability, even, you know, within California, for instance, about how the drought is affecting different farmers depending on how they get their water.
Right.
We are seeing, you know, probably a quarter to a third of our portfolio being affected in some direct way by the drought. So we're looking at making bridge loans to farmers that are getting funding through NRCS.
How about individual loans for well drilling?
Yes, we're actually working on a couple right now, putting in new pumps as well. Farmers that were getting water from the Central Valley Project, for instance, that now no longer have access to that water.
As you know, I mean, we're looking at a six-to-10-month waiting list just to get a well driller online, but of course, the costs for those wells are anywhere from $1.5 million to $1.5 million and higher. So these kind of loans are important. Let me move over to the dairy industry, which I spoke about with the first panel, and the changes in the dairy title as a result of the 2014 Farm Bill. I noted we've had some terrible years in 2009 and 2010 when we had milk prices at $9 per hundredweight, and the input costs were far, far higher, and we had a number of significant bankruptcies in California to underline it. Are you, as lenders, being more selective on how you deal with the loans to dairies? And I don't know who would like to opine here first.
We do finance some dairies in northeast, north-central Kansas and southern Nebraska, and we haven't seen any large issues except with the milk prices. That's something that is very difficult to manage for our borrowers, but it's something that they've gone out a little farther, contracted prices. It's limited on the upside, obviously, but there are some vehicles they can use, and we do require that if we finance. And we have half a dozen large, relatively large dairies that we finance out of our bank, but we do require forward pricing.
And so notwithstanding the volatility, your lending has remained somewhat constant?
Yes, it has.
On that? Have any of you looked at, in terms of forward lending, the new, under the new dairy title, the insurance program and how you anticipate that might factor in on future loans for dairies?
We, we've looked at it. We think it provides some stability to the industry in looking at the credit risk around dairy. You know, as a cooperative and with a mission charge that we have to be there to provide for the income and well-being of farmers and to be a sustainable source of credit, we look at that as being something that helps to provide some stability to the industry and helps us to take a longer-term view of the risk associated with those farmers.
I would agree.
So you don't see any different application between those dairies that belong to co-ops and those that have a different processor in which they sell their milk to?
No, I don't. We finance both cooperative dairies and privately-owned dairies.
And do any of you have any reaction to the tax treatment on bonus depreciation under Section 179 provisions?
Would you restate the question, please?
The tax depreciation that is allowed today, do you, do any of you think that that provides any more favorable conditions for lending that you're involved in?
Perhaps. Again, in our area specifically, Farm Credit System owns that space through their leasing programs. We do a few farm building programs or farm sheds, if you will, but primarily, that's owned by the Farm Credit System in our area.
All right. Well, my time's expired. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman yields now recognized, the gentleman from Iowa, Mr. King, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I thank the witnesses for your testimony. I would turn first to Mr. Wolf and ask you, I believe you were in the gallery listening to the previous panel's testimony, and when I asked the question if the Farm Credit personnel could identify an independent bank rate that was lower than their rate for credit for our farmers, and they apparently could not do so, were you surprised at their response?
No.
And neither was I. But I'd ask if you could speak to that issue because I don't think we heard from your side of this.
Well, yes, I agree that it's, I mean, it is, she got into predatory lending. I don't think that's where you were going with that. You just wanted to know about general pricing. Pricing is very difficult for us to match, even the Farm Credit System in our areas. I mentioned before, in Kansas anyway, my specific bank, it's a 38% head start, 34% federal tax, 4.375 for a state income tax. That's what makes it difficult to match fund, or to match any rate that Farm Credit has out there.
And would you have any comments to make on the mission creep question that I asked of the original panel?
Well, obviously, it has crept. I mean, the Verizon loan is one example. That Frontier is another. It's just been... It's just been recently done. I don't think that that could be described by anything other than a mission creep. Their mission has expanded. The size of the Farm Credit System has doubled in the last 10 years, and they haven't done that all within traditional agriculture, I do not believe.
Would it be your recommendation to this Congress to take a look at the mission and perhaps help write a mission statement, since they write their own?
Absolutely.
I thought it might. I don't know if that was in your original testimony I was called away, was it?
No, it wasn't, but absolutely, I'd support that.
And Mr. Williams, your comments on this subject matter?
Yeah, I would echo Mr. Wolf's comments, but specifically in East Arkansas, I could provide about 30 examples over the last three years where we've lost a borrower to the Farm Credit System, and without exception, it's a rate issue. So what we see is typically 150 to 200 basis points difference in short-term rates. And then, of course, as you stretch out for real estate lending, it even widens out from there. So time after time after time, we see it, and it's always based on rate.
Could you speak to the scope of your competition's real estate loans, how broad that scope might be?
Yeah, it's pretty well farm in our area, but we've also seen the scope widen from the Farm Credit System over the past couple of years to things like lumber companies and things of that nature. So it appears from our perspective that there's not a lot of restriction in what they can or can't do. And we certainly are willing to compete and want to compete. I've got, in Wynn, we've got seven banks in Wynn that we compete with every day, as well as Farm Credit System. So we're not afraid to compete. We just would like to do it with a level playing field.
What about non-farm, say, grain handling or processing? Is that also a field of competition?
Absolutely.
And what about residential?
Absolutely.
Would that be urban, small-town, as well as rural residential?
In our area, and we're pretty urban, Wynn's a population of about 8,000 people, but Farm Credit certainly is making housing loans in Wynn and in our entire market in eastern Arkansas.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Since I've asked you all these questions, Mr. Wolf and Williams, I should turn to Mr. Frazi and give him an opportunity to perhaps eliminate the other side of this.
I appreciate that opportunity. First, the story I hear about competition are similar to what I hear from my loan officers about commercial banks. We're losing deals every day to commercial banks. It's a competitive environment. There's a lot of liquidity in the banking system, and we've seen pressure on our loans and our margins. So, and we think that's a good thing for customers, because ultimately, farmers are going to benefit if they get lower rates. So we see that competition as well from banks that are losing loans.
Mr. Frazi, if I just ask this, if Farm Credit is at 46% of their real estate loans, as we heard in the previous panel, would there be a number that, if that number increased, would there be a number that you would think of that this Congress should be concerned about?
I believe that the FCA panelists said that we had 41% of the total agricultural debt.
Yes.
That means that 59% of the majority of it's somewhere else with other lenders. So the majority of the agricultural debt is with somewhere other than the farm.
You would agree that 100% is too much?
I would agree with 100% is too much.
We weren't going to agree on whatever that number might be in between 41 and 100.
I think it ought to be, whatever the number is, it ought to be what's in the best interest of the farmers and ranchers of this country.
I gave you the last word. Thank you, Mr. Frazi.
Chairman yields back, Mr. Chairman. Gentleman yields, and with that, we will dismiss the panel with our thanks from the entire Agriculture Committee. We appreciate you being here today. Under the rules of committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any questions posed by a member. This Subcommittee on Livestock, Rural Development, and Credit Hearing is now adjourned.